Twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, at ten thirty A.M. I'd like to thank everybody and just for moving it from eight-thirty to ten-thirty because we did have a great event with our chamber, the number-one chamber in the world, as we call it, because people get along here and do the right things for our community. And the chamber is definitely something to celebrate, and it was pancakes and politics this morning, so we heard from our local legislators, which is very important for us, that we keep the relationship, because relationships, as we know in this community, are so important, that we will keep growing that of fixing, facing and fixing things that we have at this point. So at this time, I'd like to call up Father Mike Brady with Christ Episcopal Church to give us our prayer. Thank you, Father, for being here.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council. It's a privilege to be here. Thank you for inviting me. Let's take a moment and place ourselves in the presence of God. God of the nations, grant your wisdom to our mayor and city council. Give them courage to apply that wisdom with integrity, clarity of purpose, and compassion. Let not extremes of party politics or posturing blind those who govern or motivate those who oppose, so that we may all honor one another and seek the common good. Lord, we pray for our city of Bradenton. Strengthen what is good within it and teach us to cherish it. Strengthen the insight of our leaders into what is best for the people and give them the courage to argue for a future that will bring about the flourishing of our community. We pray for all law enforcement offices in our city, first responders, and those who help those in need. Shield them with your loving presence. Guard them in their work and grant them hearts of compassion to ensure the safety and well-being of all that they encounter. Help us all to renew our commitment to one another, so that in our everyday lives, we may bear one another's burdens and rejoice to share one another's joys. We pray this in the name of your blessed Son, our Savior, Jesus Christ, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever. Amen.
Amen. Did join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father. All right, at this time, we'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
We do not have any proclamations or presentations scheduled this morning.
Okay, thank you. And at this time, we will have citizen comment. Citizen comment will be accepted during the citizen comment portion of the meeting on any non-agenda item, agenda item, future agenda item, or topic of relevance to the city. Comments will be accepted on public hearings at the appropriate time. And as we've said at all of our meetings, when you do a citizen comment, you have three minutes. You'll state your name, your city of residence. And one thing that we do have decorum in this chamber is we do not clap, cheer, boo, do all of that. We saw that, how well that worked at our last meeting, when there was probably a hundred-plus people in here about something we were talking about, and it really was good to see that decorum from the audience, the council, and all the staff worked well. And then also, we remind everybody, we will not have any outburst in the audience, or you will be asked to leave during the meeting. Again, this is a business meeting, and we're going to move forward. So at this time, I only have one citizen comment card, and it's by Bill Sanders. Please come forward, state your name, your city of residence, and you'll have three minutes. Welcome, Mr. Sanders.
I'm Bill Sanders, Bradenton, Florida. Good morning, Council. Dale Eugene Brown. This information I had before the election shows not to use it because I couldn't verify it. But it's important to the citizens of this community to know who their mayor is. And there's a few people, some in this room, that have continued, by the way, the election's over. You won. I would congratulate you, but you're not deserving. So you have some cronies, some goons, and some thugs that seem to want to harass me till the end of my time, I suppose. I like to fight. I used to be a boxer one time, good one, too. Gene Brown, there was a little boy about seven years old a couple of years ago that you cremated his father without permission of him or his family. What a despicable thing to do. You were sued, you admitted it, you got caught, you settled it. But the family has never forgotten, and people around them have never forgotten. You were charged with the cremation of a decedent's body occurred without a court order, and it was under court order. All the officers, operators, owners, employees, agents of your firm were fully aware that they weren't supposed to do this. The little boy said he wanted to see his father sleeping peacefully in his casket, and that his father was well and to be in heaven. He didn't get that opportunity because of you. I read this again last night, and I couldn't believe. It's public record, by the way. I'm not exposing anything that the public doesn't know. And I don't know how you, I don't even know how you get up here and address the public. I know how you address the public on other issues. The other issues, like a billion gallons of poop going in wherever you tell the people don't report it. I've got reports of that. I'd like to have some more time, but I'm sure you won't give it. But I want also a public record request from the clerk and the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
And the city.
Moving on.
Public record request for.
Mr. Sanders, you're out of order. If you continue to talk.
I'm not out of order. I'm asking for a public records request.
You will be asked to leave. Your time is over.
I know you don't like me, that's fine.
There's no more public comment at this time. Madam Clerk?
I ask for a public record.
We have no more cards. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
I ask for a public records request for the harassment.
You're out of order, Mr. Sanders. You're being asked to leave, and you're being escorted out. Please, sir, you've disrupted this meeting. Is there any comment by the council?
Sir.
Sir, yep, yep. Any comment by the council? I will publicly make a comment that if facts are able to be just said, and what was said was not factual the past three minutes, and, you know, yes, my family does own two funeral homes, and what that gentleman just said, speaking, was totally not true, and, you know, we have been in business for fifty years, and I feel like I have to, I don't want to say defend it, because the law speaks for itself. We did everything correct, and when there's emotions in families, it's what the families are dealing with and what we're trying to help. So it's just not factually true, and then even at the end, what he said was not factually true. So we're up here trying to help people and do things, and I will just stand on my record. Councilwoman Coker.
Yes, and this might be, I'm not sure who to direct this to, but it's distressing to see someone use public comment and to make personal attacks, and I don't think, and I believe it's specifically precluded, and I don't know if we can stop it, or do we just let it go? But I think it's important that we have public comment and that it's used in the right way, because that's sometimes the only way we can hear from the public. But when it's being used in such a way, it really bothers me.
Yeah, we, there are limitations on what can be permitted during public comment. We have been working on some procedural rules to bring forward, so that we have a formal document outlining what those requirements would be. I think probably to a large extent, didn't feel it necessary, but perhaps, given types of things that we heard today, maybe it is, and we can put that on a future agenda.
Thank you.
And again, I'll say to the public, I stand on my family's fifty years in business and my family's seven generations in Manatee County of what we've done, without getting personal in that. And if this was an opportunity for an individual to bring it up in a political atmosphere, it would have been brought up. So we'll go from there. Madam Clerk?
The next item is the consent agenda, and staff is requesting approval of items A through K.
Chair, we entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Coker, a second by Mrs. Coachman.
Mayor, I have had the opportunity to discuss the consent agenda with all councilors.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
And one.
Yes.
Carrie Jeanas, thank you. Madam Clerk?
At this time, I'll administer the oath. Anyone wishing to address city council during the following public hearings will please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and representations which you are about to give to this board will be truthful and accurate? Thank you. Item seven A is Resolution twenty-five twenty-five, and it's a public hearing.
Thank you.
I'm Jamie Schindelwolf with the Planning and Community Development Department, and I have been sworn. The case before you today is P.L.N. S.U.P. two-five-zero-zero-zero-one, or Resolution twenty-five twenty-five, which is a request for a medical clinic at five-oh-nine Ninth Street East, Bradenton, Florida. Here's an overview of the case, the applicant address, parcel ID, et cetera. I did want to point out, this is, as I said, a request for a special use permit, and so a special use permit is used for land uses requiring, or those which have the potential of disturbing other land uses in the zoning district, because they're not necessarily compatible with land uses in the zone in which they are allowed, they require discretionary review. Special uses are permitted only if in the specific instance the use will be compatible with surrounding uses, or can be made compatible through limitations of their operation or enhancements of the site development design. Special use permit makes the stipulations, if you choose to put any mandatory, and the permit is valid on the property, which is issued for as long as the conditions are met, unless the approval stipulates otherwise. Here's an aerial of the subject parcel. You can see it's at the corner of Manatee Avenue East and Ninth Street East. The future land use is urban village, and the zoning category is T-five, which is within our Form-Based Code area. The Form-Based Code defines a medical clinic as a facility engaged in the examination, diagnosis, and treatment of medical chiropractic, ophthalmologic, dental, and pediatric, or other healthcare patients. It includes administrative and clerical operations of the practice, and does not include overnight facilities for patients. The proposed request is for a medical clinic, specifically a urology office that is in existing space. There are up to fifty parking spaces available in that shared parking lot. Ordinance number four-zero-one-eight made all medical clinics require special use approval within the F.B., the Form-Based Code area, and those require city council approval. This use type is not prohibited by the future land use designation. This is the site plan that was provided of that existing building. I did tilt it, so it would be a little bit bigger. I know it's still hard to see, but Manatee Avenue East is going to be on the right of this drawing, and then that star is the approximate location of where this office would be located. Here is a photo from Google Maps, but it looks pretty much the same today, that side of the building. So we have general special use standards that all special uses must comply with, and you can see them listed here. This request at present is for a clinic to move into the existing building. So there are some existing grass buffers and trees on the property, but to fully meet all of these standards, the building would have to be demolished and rebuilt. So generally, though, staff finds that it is compatible with these standards. So the following criteria shall be considered and cited as reasons for approval or denial of this application. As stated, it's an already-built building. It's built as a multi-use building with a large parking lot. There's adequate ingress and egress with entrances from Manatee Avenue East and Seventh Avenue East. The unit that is proposed for this use is accessible through multiple doors, including near handicap parking spaces. The application has indicated that there is a dumpster that serves the tenants already on Tenth Street East, and we don't believe the medical clinic would generate a significant amount of additional waste. And staff does not believe a medical clinic warrants particular screening, buffering, or separation, as all of the activities should be confined inside of the building. Any lighting or signage would be reviewed in accordance with our city of Bradenton regulations and requirements. It does not appear that a medical clinic would have an impact on the value of surrounding properties or prevent development of nearby land. The proposed use will operate between eight A.M. and five P.M., according to the application, and should not produce byproducts that would pollute the air or water supply. If excess refuse is created by patients or staff, the property owner would be responsible to maintain cleanliness. The comprehensive plan explicitly mentions medical offices as an appropriate use in areas with this future land use category. So overall, the proposed use appears to generally meet the criteria for special use approval, and Planning Commission voted four-zero to recommend approval. Thank you. And there, sorry, there is a representation from the applicant in the audience as well, if you have any questions about the clinic itself or anything else.
So does anyone have any questions for mission? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Were there any stipulations put on this?
Staff does not have any specific stipulations that we are proposing, but you all are welcome to propose your own.
Thank you.
Miss Coachman?
Is there going to be designated parking spaces for the medical clinic?
They have not indicated that, but we can ask them.
Because there are other businesses there.
Right. Yeah, we, that's something that we can see if they're willing to do that.
All right, I have a couple of questions. Mr. Perry, did you want to go first?
Sure, I've got a couple of questions, Ms. Schindelwolf. Would this special use run with the land? Would it be accessible for a different medical use, or medical use that involves a urology
It is valid for as long as the conditions are met. So if another practice were to come in and none of the conditions changed, you know, if you put a stipulation on it, for example, you know, the stipulation is still met, et cetera, then it would be able to remain in the same use type, even if it were a different ownership or renter.
I don't know, but it is restricted to a urology practice, is that correct?
I would not say that would be the case, but I'm going to look at the city attorney.
Yeah, I mean, the medical clinic use is a fairly wide use category. It does reference in the approval that it is proposed as a medical office, but I think if it is the council's desire to specifically limit it in that fashion, we would add a stipulation that says that the use is on-site, would be limited to medical office.
My problem or concern with that is that the term "medical office," as pointed out by council, is a very generic term. It can involve drug treatment and other types of uses within the parameters of it, from my understanding, within reason. And so authorization to use this for a medical clinic is a fairly broad grant of land use to start with. Number two, I don't know how deep a dive's been done on this, to look at things like biological or chemical waste that comes out of different medical practices, and how that's disposed of, bloodborne pathogens, things like that. That would be specifically related, I imagine, to the type of medical clinic it is. And I could also imagine that this council would be concerned with how those matters are going to be handled, and particular conditions could address the handling of the disposal of waste of that nature and the like. So to give a broad grant of a medical clinic that could encompass virtually selling Band-Aids or anything else, I don't know how broad that is, but I imagine it's fairly broad, from what I understand, and other issues related to it. I'm just concerned with that. And then, lastly, I was told that this was going to be a urology clinic. I was contacted by a group of local practitioners that had a urology office here for quite some time. They were in the community, and apparently they had lost their space under certain circumstances that I'm not aware of. And I told them to talk with the planning department, basically, and I appreciate you guys getting with them and walking it through. But then I'm told that that urology group has found alternative space, and that it's not a urology clinic anymore. So I just want to make sure we're not representing things accurately, I guess.
Staff was not informed that it was no longer a urology clinic.
And the applicant is here, so I guess we can drill down on that a little bit.
We'll have time. All right, Ms. Coker, and then Ms. Barnaby.
Well, that was, two of my questions was the medical waste, how that would be handled, and also if we could put a stipulation that if it changes from being a urology practice, then we could, then they would have to come back.
Ms. Barnaby?
I was kind of thinking along the same lines because of the situation that we had just recently with a methadone clinic. And I think it's very important that we know exactly what's going in and exactly what their plans are.
Mr. Rudisso, do we have that capability of putting it as a special use for urology, since that's what they're, we've been told?
If there are particular concerns about other potential uses there that are outside of the scope of a urology practice, then I think it is okay to limit it. I would suggest we let the applicant come up and provide some more information, and then maybe we can drill down more on how we might limit it.
All right. That's answered a couple of my questions. I do have one other. We talk about the parking, and it's got up to fifty spaces there. Well, there's several businesses now that are in that complex, and that parking lot is really not well-defined when you go there to, for, it's the restaurant, whether it's another business that's in there. So is there anything, when does it come to the point when, you know, there's ten businesses there, and it's, the spaces are not adequate? Do we check into that? And the only reason I'm going on that is because I know we once approved a drive-through, and the other night I was driving down the road again, and they're backed up in the road because we didn't anticipate, and this is not a drive-through, but it's similar situation where, once we say it, it's kind of got to stay, and then they don't have to meet regulations because they are meeting the regulation.
In, within the Form-Based Code, commercial uses, including offices, have the same parking requirements, so they can change out uses within the space without necessarily having to revisit parking. However, if you're seeing something in particular on this site as part of the special use process, we can put conditions on that to take a look at the parking. So if we feel the parking is inadequate, or if there's something, like they need to upgrade landscaping and striping in the parking lot, we can talk about that.
Ms. Barnaby?
Ms. Singer. I think all of us are fairly familiar with that de facto parking lot. It's an open lot. Parts of it have been striped at some point in time. There's other areas that have not been striped. In my mind, there are all sorts of, we've got several parking lots in town. I've got one in my ward that's not screened. It does not follow the landscape code. That one does not follow our landscaping code. Again, and this may not be this gentleman's problem, but it potentially comes back to being our problem. So we may need to look at that.
Okay. And we can.
All right, any other questions, and maybe the applicant can help us. You've heard what we said, maybe you can answer to some of the questions. And like I said, the parking, as was stated, is not maybe totally your problem, but when you become a tenant there, it does become an issue if others complain. So, all right, at this time, I'll call the applicant forward.
Good morning.
Just please state your name, and obviously company.
I'm Dr. Alan Miller. I'm a urologist. This is property. Pardon?
And, okay, have you been sworn?
Yes.
So you're the urologist, and is the property owner here, too?
Yes.
So you might as well come up as well, because I think if we can clear up some of these questions, there might be some, you know, opportunity.
So from a historical point, there were a couple of historical questions. I've been in practice in Bradenton for twenty-two years. My partner's been in practice in Bradenton for twenty-eight years. Our practice was purchased by a venture capital firm of sorts, and we decided that we didn't want to work in that environment any longer. We'd been doing that for two decades. We'd been, as a practice, through three bankruptcies, as related to corporate ownership. So my partner and I decided to move out on our own. I've known Chris McKenna for twenty-two years, so we looked to see if we could move our new practice into his existing building. Beautiful building, it made a lot of sense. We only came to find out that this special use permit was a requirement in order for us to move into that building, but time did not allow us to wait. So we could not afford to wait for this process, which we were urgently told would be six months to a year even, to get the special use permit. The special use permitting process is a little bit new, it seems like, for the city as well, so no one was really sure how long it would take. So we looked to sublease. We are currently subleasing, and we'll ultimately open our practice probably next week. So that's the reason why that building remains open, but that space is to be a medical use space for a urology clinic at some point in the future, if everything works out well. So that's from the historical perspective. As far as biohazardous waste, medical offices deal with biohazardous waste, it's not an issue. There are professional companies that are contracted with to allow for the disposal of all biohazardous waste. So those two issues are pretty standard fare for a medical office. Given the community, this is a medical community, and we are literally eight blocks from the largest hospital in the area, as well as multiple medical clinics within the area and within that general vicinity. We would not be the only ones. In fact, my old practice is in Riverwalk, which is essentially a medical office park. So it wouldn't be a new thing.
Okay, all right, Ms. Moore, and then Ms. Barnaby.
I feel like I need to ask Attorney Rudisso, because I have represented urology, Manatee Urology Partners in the recent past, and I was unaware that Dr. Miller was going to be advocating for this. So do I, am I good, or?
I would probably recommend that you abstain from voting on this matter, because since we don't have the ability to look at it with the Ethics Commission in advance, I'd recommend you go ahead and abstain.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Barnaby?
Well, you are still allowed to ask questions, and it is your ward. So did you have any questions that you wanted to ask of the applicant, or? No, it's Pam's ward, Ms. Coachman's ward, I'm sorry. I am so sorry. I'm not cooking with gas today.
It's all of our ward, right?
Questions, Ms. Barnaby?
Yes. As you have alluded to, it is a beautiful building. It is a historic building. When I was growing up here, it was a department store. And one of the problems that we've had over the years is making sure that whatever signage people choose to use, that it does fit the ambiance of the building and that it is appropriate, I guess is a good way to say it. We've had people in the past want to put up large LED signs that can move and change and do all sorts of things. I personally don't feel that that's appropriate on a historic building.
I understand that. So we're a professional practice, we're not looking for flashy kinds of things of that nature, we're looking for professional things.
I'm trying to think of urology depart, you know, profession, what, no. You might even go there.
No being mannequins.
Do you have any other questions, Ms. Barnaby?
No, it would be, we're looking for a professional environment, professional signage, and we've talked, Chris and I, as well as my other partners, about how we would like the signage to be. But it would all be in line with the existing structure and the historical value. That's kind of cool to us, too, so.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Kramer?
Thank you. Sir, your practice, without going into HIPAA issues, would there be a large number of patients who may need disabled parking at any given time, with one patient being seen while another potentially showing up?
Certainly, there could be some. Because there's two of us, we will essentially be seeing six patients an hour. So you'd have six parking spaces every hour being used, pretty much throughout the eight-to-five day. In terms of how many of those need wheelchair access or wheelchair support, there isn't very many. I would put a percentage on it if I knew, but I would be in the 20 to 30 percent of patients who would need either a wheelchair or walker. And the facility itself, the building itself, can accommodate both of those things as it stands now. But it's not going to be a place where 90 percent of the people are going to need those kinds of handicap-type access.
Okay. Clearly, that's my concern, is the parking right there. I believe that handicap disabled spaces are right at the front, but I think there might be room for more in whatever talk we may have about improving the parking lot.
So the nice thing, not to interrupt, but the nice thing about the parking spaces and the location of the clinic where it would be, there are entrances from the parking space directly, from the side of the building in the parking lot, as well as on the street-side Ninth Street East. So from the door to a parking spot on Ninth Street East, or to one of the entry doors from the parking lot itself, in the row, around the building would be very close and easily accessible by wheelchair, even by ambulance if necessary. And that is a rare event, so.
Sure. This is sort of going to be for Mr. McKenna, but also for planning. Right now, if we were to approve this as-is, without any stipulations, the special use would be for the entire parcel, not specifically for one business or segmented part of the property. Is that correct?
No. We generally have been doing this suite by suite, office by office, because if there's grandfathering, we want to make sure we're looking at these on a case-by-case basis, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Perry?
Just briefly, I did speak with Dr. Miller, who's the person I talked to on the phone a couple of times. And he did point out to me early on, as far as their concerns regarding protracted special use permit process and their need, kind of the terms of the essence. And that's when I suggested, basically, that the process itself, getting through the Planning Commission and ultimately to council for the special use, would be probably the middle of February. I thought that was about as quick as we could do it. And I think I spoke with you probably close to the end of the first week in January, thereabouts. And so we've been fairly quick to get that through, and I appreciate the Planning Commission taking it that quick as well. I wasn't sure what the situation was, because I did hear later that, oh, there wouldn't be a urology clinic there. I didn't know that you were in a particular location, hoping to ultimately then move your practice to this location. And so I appreciate you clarifying that for us and apologize if I didn't accurately reflect that. The second thing with Mr. McKenna, would you mind if this is designated with the special, under the special use, with a condition that it be designated a urology practice?
No, not at all.
Okay. That's all I have.
And any other questions? All right, any staff follow-up before we go to public hearing? All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think we do need a little bit of follow-up from staff, because the resolution, as it's currently drafted, just depicts the building, and it doesn't define what the actual office location is, so we might just need a second to see if we can describe that and include it in a stipulation, if that's something that's important to the council.
All right, since you already brought that up, too, when you showed the square, Ms. Jamie, you had the square of the property, but it looked like half of the parking lot was outside of that square. Does the parking lot go all the way to Sixth Avenue, or?
Seventh there.
Well, it's where one way, it'll turn, it'll become Seventh there. Yeah, see, because, is the parking lot go all the way down, or is it just there?
So the, I own the entire property there, so all the way down, so that other parcel that there is also there. They had mentioned about the parking. As part of this discussion with him to come in, we know that the parking lot needs to be restripped, and that's part of the build-out activity.
And design, because I got.
I've been dealing with a roof and a awning and a few other things.
And walls and blocks, bricks blowing off and all that, yeah.
It's on the list, it's just.
Well, I just got to tell an experience I had there. I went there for lunch and parked, and then when I came out, there was a car in front of me and a car behind me, so I couldn't leave. And thank goodness, there was a car that had left, so I was able to wiggle my way out. But, so, just because it's not lined, and somebody pulled in front of me, and somebody went around, and then again, somebody came over the curb to get in in the back. So it's not a well-designed parking lot right now, especially for more business.
I understand. And don't disagree. Just to note, that happened regardless of the lines being there or not. So the general public, I don't, just has, there's just issues with people parking. We do have an issue, and just, if I can bring it up, I don't know if you guys approve it, but over on where the green is, where the parcel is, Osaka, every Sunday decides to have, or once a month decides to have a thing, and it blasts out my parking lot. So I have told them many times not to allow their tenants to park in my parking lot for that certain reason, because I do have other, you know, occasional events upstairs, and if it's on the same day, we have a total nightmare of parking. So just, I agree with you on the parking, I'm trying to do the best to maintain that. It will be striped before they even move in, or if not, once I'm done with the roofing and the other pieces that was on my agenda to fix.
Thank you. All right, any, so what do we need to determine, you think, before we go to public comment?
If the location of the unit is important, then we just need to identify that so.
On the property.
So we can include it as a stipulation.
Should we get the stipulations before we go to public comment, to be listed out?
I don't think we need to. Maybe I can work with staff on the language here while we're doing that.
Because obviously, you've heard urology clinic only, fix the parking lot, and locate it in the building correctly.
Okay, do we want to include provisions related to the parking as a stipulation? Because if that's the case, I need to know what exactly the council wants them to do.
Well, I would just think that you have to keep it striped and designed and brought up to current code, if there is any difference. Again, we want more, old manatee, and Ms. Moore would say this probably more than anybody and Ms. Coachman, is we want that to be another downtown. And so we want businesses, we want people, we want things to happen, but sometimes, I'm going to go back to that drive-up. We forced an ice cream shop on 26th Street, and we realized that it's not going to work, and we can't stop it. We can't change it now. So now, every time we've done another drive-up, we're making sure that they're able to stack enough cars. So we want to make sure that this is successful without hindering the business too much. And maybe it's some things that already should have been done. The parking maybe should be something that we should keep up with. But, you know, nobody's trying to give anybody a hard time, especially after the unprecedented storm season we just had, there's a lot of other things you're having to deal with. But we're the ones that are going to get the phone calls and the emails, why did we create this? And as we know, most of those, you know, people, it's one-offs, that really don't know what's going on, but with Facebook and people that are going to come up and talk about untruths, we got to deal with it. So let's set us all up to succeed, is what I know this council and I know you want, because you don't want to be up here again for, on code enforcement things, because it didn't happen. So, I don't know. What do we need, Mr. Rudisso?
I think we might need a brief recess, so I can talk to staff about.
Before the public comment, public hearing?
I think you could probably do public.
Yeah, I'm confident about that. All right, so we'll do public hearing, see what happens from that, and then we'll come back out of public hearing and figure out where we go next. Thank you. You can go back. All right, at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak can come forward. You'll have three, please state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Good morning.
My name is Carolina Habinzorn. I'm from the city of Bradenton. I'm here because we have been having issues with the fences for over two years.
No, no, this is on the only thing with the clinic.
Yep. Oh, never mind, sorry.
Yeah, you're next.
Next in line.
Next in line. All right. Anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 2525? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll take a 10-minute?
I think that'd be good.
10-minute recess. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so we'll do public hearing, see what happens from that, and then we'll come back out of public hearing and figure out where we go next. Thank you. You can go back. Yep. Alright, at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak can come forward. You have three, please state your name and address and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Carolina Habinzwar. Uh, I'm from the city of Bradenton. Um, I'm here because we have been having issues with the fences for over two years.
No, no, this is on the only thing with the clinic.
Yes, yes. Oh, never mind, sorry.
Yeah, you're next.
Next in line.
Next in line. Alright, anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 2525? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll take a ten minute?
I think that'd be good.
Ten minute recess. Thank you. Alright, so we'll come out of recess. Ms. Singer, did you have any more that we wanted to go through before we?
Uh, no, we spoke with the city attorney. I think, um, paving and striping, um, the parking lot is one condition. The other is that, uh, we're talking about a square footage for, um, the offices at that location. They don't have specific suite numbers that they're tying it to. I think that's what we discussed with the city attorney. So he has the language to include in resolution.
Alright, so we're having three stipulations in the resolution.
Yes, and Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll read three proposed stipulations into the record and then if they're acceptable, um, I want to bring the applicant up after they've heard them to make sure they're in agreement and then they could be incorporated into a motion.
Thank you.
Alright, so the first stipulation is that the approved use shall be limited to a medical office for a urology practice. Uh, the second stipulation is the approved use shall be limited to the approximately twenty-two hundred square foot unit at the southwest corner of the building. And the third stipulation is that, uh, parking and, uh, paving and striping for the existing parking area shall be brought up to current code standards.
Okay. Counsel, any questions or, uh, for? Alright, we'll bring the applicant up. I guess this would be applicant and property owner.
Mm-hmm.
Because there's stipulations. Do you have any questions or concerns or do you agree with all the three of those stipulations?
I agree.
State your name and for the-
Chris McKenna, and I agree. Property, as the property owner, I agree.
Yeah, because I think with all of those would be more on him for the future and obviously you'd get the right now, so. Alright, thank you. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve Resolution 2525 with said stipulations.
Second.
Alright. Alright, any further comment? Questions by the board? Anything? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward Three.
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
With Mrs. Moore at the direction of Mr. Rudisell. I guess, what do you call that?
Abstaining.
Abstaining because of prior relationships. Yep. Alright, so carries four to zero. Thank you. Madam Clerk, moving forward.
Item seven B is form-based code appeal and it's a public hearing as well.
Um, good morning. Robin Singer, planning community development director, um, here to present on this item regarding an appeal of an administrative decision to deny, um, a adjustment for fence height. Um, within the form-based code, um, when, uh, we, we allow for a certain amount of adjustments that can be done administratively, um, at my discretion as the director. And if they, um, if I deny it, they have the right to appeal and those appeals go directly to city council. Uh, in this particular case, it involves a property at ten-eleven Twenty-first Avenue West, um, which is a single-family home, currently occupied by a single-family home. And, um, they are requesting, uh, just to show the location, it is at a corner property. It is at an intersection of Twenty-first Avenue West and Eleventh Street West. Um, it is located in the T4R, uh, form-based code restricted district and in the urban village, uh, future land use area. Uh, and this depicts the property in their original request, which was for a five-foot wood fence along, uh, both frontages and six-foot wood fence along the side and along this portion of the frontage, um, with gates that would, um, impede on the, uh, that would cover the, the entrance to their driveway. And this is a relatively new home. They built it in, uh, twenty-twenty-three, uh, and then they followed up with the request for the fence. This is what's allowed under the code. You can have a four-foot fence in the areas that are in yellow. In green, you can have a six-foot fence and then you have to leave free and clear these areas, uh, that are within thirty-five feet of the intersection of the property lines at the corner and within ten feet of the driveway. Um, the individuals, uh, we applied for an appeal, or excuse me, applied for an adjustment, um, last year, uh, when they wanted to put up the fence and that appeal was denied, or that adjustment was denied and they were informed of their right to an appeal. Uh, they didn't take advantage of that. They went before the code enforcement special magistrate in July, um, and they gave them additional time to go ahead and obtain permits, um, for what they were allowed to do. And I followed up with them in an email. There's, there's been a number of emails. This has actually been a much longer process to get to this point, but, um, I informed them of what they were allowed to do and basically included, and I apologize because this is upside down from the, the previous slide, but basically, so north is, is down in this slide, but again depicts kind of what they're allowed to have, uh, where they're allowed to have the six-foot, the four-foot and, um, and the clear visibility triangle requirements. Um, and they indicated they still wanted what they wanted. They wanted to have their fence that had already been installed. Um, and this depicts the fence. This area long here is between four and five feet along these frontages. This is the intersection. Um, to the right is Eleventh Street and, uh, going to the left is Twenty-first Avenue. Um, their driveway is over in this location. Um, and then it kind of goes to a, a greater height of about six feet in this area and along, uh, the backside of the property. And again, this depicts looking north on Eleventh Street, uh, and the corner, uh, visibility triangle is there. Uh, and again, this is a little closer view of the corner visibility triangle. And then if you are stopped at the stop sign, this is going to be your view along here. Um, among the reasons for the, and they'll indicate to you why, um, they, they want the fence, what they feel their security issues are. Um, and I should also mention, I'm certified in crime prevention through environmental design, which is, speaks to, uh, safety and security on properties and how you achieve that. And usually, uh, they promote more of a transparent fence. I, certainly would be helpful in a corner visibility triangle to have a more, like a metal picket fence or something along those lines. Uh, looking into the area around this property, there, you do see some fences that are four feet high along the frontages, not into a corner, but into the frontages and, but they're generally chain linked, so they're transparent. Some transparency allows for the, at least the perception of surveillance. It allows you to secure your property, but at the same time, you can see what's going on inside and outside your property so somebody can't hide behind your fence, uh, and do something at your home that, that can't be viewed by the public. Um, but I think part of the reason that they've indicated, um, is there have been some unsavory activities in view of their home and they had some videos that they submitted, but after talking to the city attorney, we didn't include those in the package due to the nature of what was depicted in those videos and they can describe that to you, um, but they're, we're not going to show you those videos today. Um, but in any case, I think that's their, what they feel is their compelling reason. I think my issue with this is that when you look around, um, and this again gets into the code, you can have four feet in light, uh, in height in front of the, the property, six feet behind, uh, the home, and then you just can't have anything in the corner visibility triangles. Um, and this describes your corner of the visibility triangle, which comes out of the land use regulations of thirty-five feet. And so when we're looking at this, uh, safety and security, I think being primary issues here and just the opacity of the fence in the corner visibility triangle is one of my primary issues with this. And also just don't feel that it's necessarily in keeping with the neighborhood and what we're seeing around the neighborhood. Um, to put up a opaque fence, four to five feet high, uh, along, you know, they, they are allowed to have it in some areas, but to put it across your corner visibility triangle and across the front of the property, um, I, I feel just is not consistent with, um, what we're trying to promote in the area. And it doesn't necessarily give them potentially the safety and security because we feel that some visibility in and out of the property promotes, based on SEPTED principles, promotes, um, that those kind of, um, security issues, um, with, uh, being able to have, provide natural surveillance, um, throughout the property. Um, so, and the criteria, I'll go back one. Um, so granting the adjustment will promote the same general level of land use compatibility as the otherwise applicable standards. And that's where I'm talking about, you know, that safety and security is an issue, but also compatibility with the surrounding area and what other people have put in place. Um, granting the adjustment will not materially affect adjacent land uses and the physical character of the uses in the immediate vicinity of the proposed development because the inadequate buffering, screening setback or other land use considerations. So we're concerned about the blocking of, of the view of traffic, um, particularly at that stop sign, um, and that we feel that, again, that the fence isn't consistent with other fences in the area. And granting the adjustment will generally, uh, will be generally consistent with the purpose and intent of the form-based code and the existing land use regulations where applicable. Um, the purpose and intent of the form-based code is protect, preserve the public health, safety and general welfare and to insist in the orderly and controlled growth of the development of the city. And so I think as the reasons have already stated, um, we feel that it is inconsistent with that. Um, and with that, um, Ms. Jettie and Ms. Cordoba are here. If you have any questions for me before they come up to speak.
Ms. Barnaby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Ms. Singer, this is a corner lot.
Yes.
And we tend to treat corner lots as if they're two front, I mean, there's, there's, it's, yeah. So it's like you have two, two front yards rather than?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so this, this fence is installed already?
Yes.
And was it installed with any kind of permit?
No, no. They did, they had a permit for their single-family home and I think there was some confusion at the time, uh, about whether or not they had their fence approved and I think they can speak to that, but we have, we have not. And that's why it's in front of the special magistrate, because they installed the fence without the permit.
Do we know if we have a rogue fence company out there installing things without permits or do, was it done by the applicant?
I think it was the applicant and then there was, we were trying to get it cleaned up so they could bring in a fence contractor and do it properly and then there was, so they've been trying to do that. They've been trying to-
Okay. Well, I mean, I'm very, that's the neighborhood I grew up in, so I'm very familiar with the neighborhood.
And, and to your point, I think, um, also elsewhere in the city, you can put a six-foot fence if it was halfway between the house and the road or that property line, um, but just behind the residence. So elsewhere in the city, you could put a six-foot fence along here, but in the form-based code, it only allows for four feet in the front. So, for clarification. Elsewhere in the code also, same rules apply with a four-foot fence being allowed in the front yard and just nothing in the corner visibility triangle.
Um, but just, just so I understand, if it were a larger picket fence or a chain link fence where you could see through it, would it, would the configuration that you're showing us here, would it need to follow that configuration?
Yes.
Even if it was chain-
It'd still be limited.
Okay.
Even if it was chain link or metal picket, uh, it would still be limited. But if, uh, if city council were to allow them to put something into the corner visibility triangle, I think it should be much lower, um, and, and at least be transparent.
Okay.
Some transparency.
Thank you.
Mr. Perry.
Um, I, I think I got the answer to my question, which was asked by Counselor Barnaby and then, then I read your denial memorandum, which is dated May fifteenth, which bottom of the first paragraph, and should we note the subject fence was installed without permits? And so my question is, when was the CO issued? Since you said it was new construction.
Uh, this, for the single-family home?
Yeah.
Before all this came to bear. It was in-
How, how long before?
Uh, I, I'm not sure. Twenty, it was in twenty-twenty-three, but I don't-
Do you know when the fence was installed?
Not exactly, no.
Okay. If-
I don't know. Greg, do you know?
I'm not sworn.
Okay. Greg needs to be sworn.
So we don't know when the fence was installed. But, but we know that at least you, you issued a, a denial memorandum ten months ago.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And code enforcement has taken action on the fence.
Yes.
And if council was to allow any sort of construction into the, uh, the triangle itself, they, I would imagine that the next person that wants to put structure into the triangle would have a pretty good argument to say, well, you let them do it.
This is true.
And so why is the disparative treatment?
Yeah. I mean, just as I'm looking to other properties in the area for consistency with them, I think somebody else would be able to come in for an adjustment and ask for that same consistency.
Absolutely.
Based on this one.
And potentially have actionable claims for disparative treatment? I did notice that there's other fences in the, the area that were chain link and I know that a lot of them are grandfathered in prior to the ordinance and-
Yeah.
It's not these fine people's fault a lot of times, you know?
Yeah.
I think what they do is they look at the area and they say, well, other people have a fence, so I think I can have a fence and everything. But obviously with the development of traffic engineering, pedestrian safety, uh, security issues you talked about for crime prevention and the like, it's a determination that the, uh, that the design and, and, and construction of these fences not be in a corner visibility triangle, particularly on twenty, you know, Twenty-first is a fairly active-
Yeah.
Uh, avenue.
Yeah.
For, for through traffic and the like. And thirty-five feet isn't too much. If you look at that photograph itself, um, you'd have to pull right up to that intersection and make a full stop and check because that goes right up to the right of way. If you look in that photograph, there's a fire hydrant right there and it looks like it's about three to four feet off that fire hydrant.
Alright, Ms. Coker.
Um, yeah, just, I mean, aside from the technical issues that you're, um, Twenty-first Avenue to me is the main, is one of the main thoroughfares there, down in that area. And, um, having the stockade fencing in the front is really sending, um, it, it really affects the, the curb appeal and what you're trying to project in that neighborhood. Um, I think, I'd rather see us focus on the bad behavior that they're trying to address with the stockade fencing. I just, um, having a code that does not allow it on the front of a house is common in the county. I mean, that's not something that's just in that form-based code. It's pretty standard not to have stockade fencing in the front of a house because it just isn't, it's not good for the ambiance, it's not good for the curb appeal, and I'd rather see us focus on maybe additional, um, I don't know how to do it, but to, to address the problem.
Additional police presence, is that what you're looking at?
Well, yes.
Well, and-
Alright, yeah.
I was just gonna say, looking at it, for me personally, trying to back out of that driveway with that there and not being able to see what I might be backing into or if there's somebody standing on the other side of the fence waiting to do me harm because I can't see them, it's a solid fence. There's, there's a lot of issues here.
Alright, so we want to swear, Greg? Swear at Greg or is there anything else, questions? Go ahead and swear him in case when we get to the end.
Swear affirm the factual statements and representations which you're about to give to this board will be truthful and accurate. Thank you.
Alright, so at this point, we're ready to go to the applicant. Okay, now you can come up and-
Jenny and Ms. Cordoba.
Jenny and Ms. Cordoba. Alright, welcome and please state your name and, uh, address for the record.
My name is Carolina. I live on the city of Bradenton. Um, my mother is Rosanna and she also lives on the city of Bradenton.
And you both have been sworn as we know, yes. Thank you.
So I didn't save it, I don't know if we can use this one.
Yeah, she'll get it on.
Uh, actually, I did have a permit, something that is not even mentioned here. I applied for the permit on May twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three and I had copies of that. The fences was placed on December tenth, almost a hundred and ninety-eight days later. So let me show you. Permit, you can see the date. If I get a permit when I come to apply, it means the permit is moving forward and I asked for it. Can I put my fences now? And they say, no problem, go ahead. You already got the permit. You can see the description of the fences in there too, when I apply, and it has the stamp of the city and when it was received. So, showing how the fences will be placed. Five feet A-wide, six feet A-wide. Same here. Same here, it's a copy. It is a picture when we placed the fences, December 10, 2023. So if you check from May 26, 2023 till December, they have basically seven months to send us, hey, this didn't work. But let me show you what I got, because this is fur, I'm furious about this, like, you have no idea. I spoke to the city after city code sent me a fine because I didn't have a permit for fences. They are like, you don't have a permit. I'm like, I do have a permit, I have copies of all the permits. They confused, like, it wasn't a house in place. I showed them all the inspections, there is a house, there is not an empty lot. We can have fences, we have a permit. This is all the conversation with the zoning department. We show them the permit number, we have a permit for the house, single-family house, and the permit for the fences. An employee, and actually, and Black Greg is here because he's CC on these emails. He said, hey, we sent you an email on May 26, around 1:56 PM saying your fences failed. I request a copy of the email because I never got the email. Let me show you what I got. I'm quite sure you guys are familiar with emails all day long. This is not an email, and this is fake. This is not a copy of an email, this is not a screenshot. The phone number created on this email is from another employee of the city.
Can you make that a little bit bigger, please?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I'm sorry, I am a paralegal, I work with emails all day. This is not an email. He sent me a screenshot, he's here, he can show the email from his same phone. He's CC on the email, he can prove it. This is not an email. This is fraud. Then we go back to the triangle of visibility, since they say you cannot see anything because it's a corner lot. I made a video of this. A video sometimes is better than just a picture because you can actually see. Actually, if you see on your left side, you have a fence that you cannot see to your left. And if you're coming from this point, 11th Street, the first thing you do is check to the left. You don't check on the right because no cars are coming from the right, they're coming from the left point.
Can you make that larger, please? Like you did for a moment there?
Yeah, absolutely. You have the pictures there, exactly like in the video, just screenshots from the video. 14th Street, you can see the stop, it's after the fences. On this side, it's to the left, you can see the fences, not the street. Also, even if we want to do 35 angle for visibility, you cannot do it. The structure of the house doesn't allow it unless we put the fences inside the room. It's impossible. You cannot do it. And then we did hire a fence company because we did try to, to go on with this. And even the fence company decided to return the money because they couldn't deal with them, with the zoning department. They gave them different information, no, do this permit this way, no, now this way. At the end, they say, we already had a permit, and we had to draw our own permit in order for them to take over and redo a new permit. So if I don't have a permit, it doesn't make sense for me. We have multiple cameras around the property. We have a guy peeing in front of the camera, recording himself, and I have the video, if you allow me to play it. I have another guy masturbating himself in front of the camera, and I have a two-years-old. I don't want my child to see that, I'm sorry. Uh, it's unbelievable. And then I had to do, I had to call the police because I have two individuals marking the house. I have the video for them to come and steal the house. I had to call the police for this. My mom lives by herself. She take care of my child while I'm working. I mean, there is a lot of internal issues that are not my concern. I'm out of that situation, but, let me show you. This is the guy masturbating himself. He passed by the house almost every day doing it.
2:00 PM.
2:00 PM, afternoon time. This guy's looking into the house, does my police report. The police, uh, for, saw it was necessary to give me a police report for this. I'm gonna show you the video too. Until she realized there is a camera that is recording her. And she decides to leave. That's my report with the police. And XCD is just the PO that I did to be able to have the fences at the height that were approved in the beginning.
Okay, any questions?
This is a mess.
Yeah. So, um, all right, what we do is we have to go...
Was that somebody trying to break into your mailbox?
No, so basically what they do is they mark the houses to come back later.
Okay.
Uh, and that's the way they do it. I grew up in New Jersey, New York, and that's how they do it over there. I have a criminal justice major. We learn all these basics. And, yeah.
Just can tell what that was, they were trying to do, if they were trying to actively break into a mailbox or...
They have done that before too. And they have sent mail to my house that is not my mail. And if you guys are familiar with the area, it's prostitution, drugs, and homeless every corner of the area. Sadly, we had to live with that, but we don't have to be part of it. I like to wake up in the morning and feel safe. I don't want to be lacking my thought every two minutes. No, no, when if he, if someone, he just, because most of the homeless I see around are men's, are gonna get my child for something, or drugs. I don't know. That's my concern, my safety, my child.
Okay, thank you. We have to keep moving with the procedure. We'll go to public hearing, and then we'll come back. First, before we go to public hearing, Ms. Singer?
So the basic chronology of events, and now if, if you have more questions about it, Greg was probably more familiar, more involved in this process as it moved through. So after they built their home, they applied for the, the fence, and it was failed because they were showing a vacant lot. We said, well, you know, you can't put a fence on a vacant lot. And they said, well, we did build a house, so it was soon after that that we requested an updated survey so that we could see the house and we could see where the fence was going. Then there was a lot of back and forth about how the fence was depicted because they were saying six feet, eight feet. And what they meant was an eight-foot wide panel, but that wasn't clear on the plans. And it appeared that they were asking for an eight-foot tall fence, and we were asking for clarification. So it was some months later before that got clarified, it was December, that it was failed for not being compliant with code. And we had all of those, you know, that would have been sent to them in an email explaining what the code stated and what they were allowed to do. Uh, and then soon thereafter, and also in December of 2023, they were cited. And so I, I assume that that's the point at which the fence had been built, and therefore they were cited for work without a permit. Again, some back and forth between them to get it into compliance and some confusion about the rules, but eventually they applied for an adjustment, and that adjustment was denied in May of 2024. Um, and then they, we told them in that process, there's an appeal process, if you want to go through that. They didn't file for an appeal. It was taken to the special magistrate in July of 2024. Uh, and we hadn't heard back from them in August. I went ahead and reached out to them and said, again, here's the rules, that's the diagram that I put up there before, which is on the next page, and indicated, you know, these are the rules, quoted the code, and so forth. And again, they, they got back with me and said, you know, we really want you to reconsider, can you reconsider your adjustment, because we really want the fence? And I said, well, here's what I will do, is I'll reissue basically my denial of the adjustment so you can file an appeal. Um, and so they filed the appeal in December, and it's before you today. Now, this delay of this last month, that's on me for, for not bringing it to you in January, but...
All right, so the question I would have right out is, we were shown something that they thought they had a permit back in May of 23.
Yeah, and I don't, Greg can perhaps...
With a dotted line or highlighted where it was gonna go?
Yeah, Greg DeLong, Assistant Director of Planning and Community Development, and I have been sworn. What they were showing you was the application, not an issued permit. So there, there's two different things. Staff has worked very diligently with this resident and her mother, trying to help them. We've spent time onsite. Um, I have an email that Isabel de Jesus, who's no longer in our department, went onsite with her, along with a former city planner, worked with them, also submitted sketches of what is allowed. We were always getting a rebuttal back on the rules. So as of this date, there is still no permit issued. We've worked very hard with them. There was an email that has been omitted from the applicant that I sent to them on June 27th of 2024, laying out, and I didn't interject because staff was doing their job. They were doing an excellent job communicating. I didn't feel the need to interject at that point. So I did step out of it, but on June 27th of 2024, I did interject and explain where we were in the process, the fact that they missed the magistrate, or missed the appeal process, they're in front of magistrate asking for an extension, which magistrate gave them till the end of 2024. She gave them six months to get the approved application, so that is kind of where we are. There's still no approved application. There has been some communication, miscommunication going on during the process, but staff was laying it out very clearly on what they needed to do, and it's just not been obtained to this date.
All right, questions? Ms. Coachman?
Who was the fencing company that was involved?
You know, I'm not sure of that because the communication we have was just directly with the applicant and her mother.
It seemed like you said that the, your fencing company and the city were at odds. So, I mean...
Who, who is, can you come forward to this?
If I may?
Yes.
I think part of that was that the application, I think, was originally under the owner's name, and, and they needed to shift it to, I mean, we don't require, an owner can pull a permit, but for whatever reason, we had to cancel out the other permit application in order for them to reapply, under the contractor's name. And I think there was some confusion, and we, we were trying to work that out in the midst of everything else going on, so...
And who was the fence company?
Uh, it was called FenceDiscount.com. I have all, Fence Discount, that's the name...
FenceDiscount.com.
That's the name of the contractor. They did come multiple times, have different emails, even showing Isabel de Jesus, an old employee of them, the same person that told me my fences were good to go, telling them, no, put the permit online through the PO system, no, come in person. So again, this internal issue of an employee giving wrong information is what made us put a lot of money into fences, put the fences, and now have to take more money out of pocket to bring it out to the code. One more time, because of internal mistakes. I'm sorry, but I cannot keep running out of money just to bring fences to court because of an internal mistake, one employee that didn't know what she was telling you.
So one of the questions that comes up with me was, the fence was already installed, so what was the new fence company, the fence company gonna actually do if you hired them?
They were supposed to give us the fences, like, you know, like, the vinyl fences that you can see through, but put them up to court, that's why we hired them. I was like, I don't want to deal with the city anymore, just please do it.
So you were aware of the code then, at that point, of what the requirements are of the location?
No, when we applied for the initial permit and when we placed the fences. Two days later, they tell me, oh, sorry, we made a mistake.
You applied for the permit, but you never received a, a permit.
They didn't tell me that. When I came here in person and I asked, here is the permit, I paid for everything, yeah, you're good to go, you can place your fences now, thank you.
But you never got a copy of a...
No.
Normally they wouldn't, I don't think they would say, you're good to go just because you've turned in an application.
We know that now, but if you are new into this, and you're a homeowner putting your own fences, you come in person to the city and you ask, it's anything else, do I have to wait for anything? No, you're good to go, you can put your fences. I didn't put my fences the same day, the next day. I waited six months, seven months.
Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Perry?
Perhaps that document that you thought was a permit that appears to be an application be put back onto the...
Yeah.
And maybe Greg and Robin can talk about that, because I, I think that the crux of what's going on is that, and, and I think you did a good job of developing this, is that an application was put in with specifications on it, but a permit wasn't issued. And the assertion is, is yeah, but there was a verbal authorization.
But look at, I'm gonna show you something. I have a screenshot of the online portal of the city with the result P of passing. It shows passing.
I want to see that first part, if I could, Mayor. So the top of it says, development permit application. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you have the specifications, the description of the work, it's a little hard for me to read, but it has a, a shadow wood, 150 feet wide, high six feet, 127 Y, E, and...
That's eight.
Two gates. So you submitted this as an application, I want to see the submission date, it's May 26 of 2023. Okay. Did you ever receive a permit?
Submitting what? They told me this, you need a card, I was good to go. That was my permit.
Okay, can you blow that out a little bit so I don't see just the business card? And I want to take a look at the rest of the document, if that's okay. And down below, it says, schedule a new inspection, is that right? Open a...
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Robin, do you have any comments on what this depicts as far as notice to a particular applicant?
And it says notice of commencement, commencement, doesn't it?
Yeah. Is that the website?
It's something that was done online, because doesn't it say online services at the top?
Where?
Up here.
Yeah, it's, I mean, again, it's not a permit, it's not an issued permit.
And the date on that is 5/26/23, so that's a...
At the same date as the other form turned in? This more?
Um, yeah. So this is not a permit, but the card, if you scroll up a little bit? So is that just the application number that is...
Yes.
Let me ask you something.
What result B means is passing?
I don't know. I could see.
If I come in person, you tell me you went through, go ahead, and now I see P.
In 2023, we didn't do online permitting per se. I mean, I, we would have gotten a permit card.
This is prior to that, so...
May I?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, if I just like, can I understand?
Yeah.
I guess maybe the question presented, right?
I guess maybe the question presented right now, this is what I'm kind of boiling it down to, to frame the issue. Number one, there is some question about, I guess, probability as far as the amounts expended. Because now we built a fence and now we have to bring it to code potentially. And then number two, whether we're going to grant a variance to permit the existing structure or whether we're going to deny the appeal with potentially some stipulations regarding, or no, just that's it.
Well, I mean, yeah.
Come up to the microphone.
Yeah. So, I mean, and we are getting, and I understand her concerns and we, obviously, we've, we have a multitude of emails going back and forth on this issue. And, and, you know, for any fault on our department, I apologize. But, you know, we're trying to, we're here to move forward. And the reason I opened it up for an appeal is to allow her to have her say here at city council. Be that as it may, we, the, what you can do today is either uphold the denial of the adjustment or you can disagree with it and you can direct it back to staff to say, you can approve it, but with these stipulations. For example, if you just wanted her to take out the portions that are in the corner visibility triangle. If you want her to lower the height of the fence across the front so that it's only four feet high. Whatever, you know, the city council wants to do. But that would be in the vein of directing staff to reverse that denial and approve it with certain stipulations, from modifications to the permit.
And how would that be done? Through a stipulation?
Yes.
And what we do with this matter before council today? Would we table this or otherwise?
I would say you make a motion on it and then you can direct it back. Your motion would be to direct it back to staff to take the necessary action as indicated by the city council.
And this depiction, the drawing you have right up there, does allow for the six-foot-high fence along the back line and portion of the sideline.
Yes.
And then it has the four-foot-high requirement and it's existing six right now. Is that right?
Yeah, it's approximately six feet along here for a portion of this. So this would need to, in order to comply with code, should come down to four feet high. I believe it drops down to between four and five feet high along these other front edges, including into the corner visibility triangle. That's the way it currently is. So you can have them remove it out of the corner of the visibility triangle, drop it down to two or three feet so that you can see over it, you know, a motorist can see over it. So that shows you what it is. And it varies in height. You can see at the corner here that it drops down a little bit. So this is closer to four feet along here.
It's closer to five to me.
But I would, I would say they're all six-foot sections. It's just the way the land topography.
Yeah.
But if Ms. Moore, you finish up, then Ms. Coker, then Mr. Kramer?
Thank you. I was actually just going to ask Chief Bevan if she had any thoughts. Or, I mean, I know Ms. Singer is certified in SEPTED and has expressed her concerns regarding the applicant's goal, which I completely sympathize with because that is, you know, those videos are egregious. So I don't know if we have thoughts on whether a fence like that helps or not.
I was, I was actually kind of engaged in the other stuff she was talking about.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about. Would this fence help or hinder some of that?
Well, there's some conflict as to what has been reported and what she's indicating today. And so I'm going to have to get some additional details. We've only responded out to the House for criminal mischief in the past. So I'm not real clear on this other incident, which sounded pretty significant to me. So we just jumped on that. You know, clearly a privacy fence is just that. It can provide greater safety and privacy for a home. But I, as to the other stuff, I'm going to have to get, we're going to have to get more details because our reporting system doesn't show a response by us to those, to that significant incident that you detailed.
All right. So let's go. Ms. Coker, Ms. Coachman, then Vice Mayor Kramer.
Yes. I just wanted to offer that while we're deciding how to handle this, that there is an opportunity with the CRA to assist financially. And as long as the permit hasn't already been issued, the work hadn't already been done, that we might be able to assist with what would go there. Just want to throw that out there.
Thank you.
Ms. Coachman?
Couple of things. There was mentioning of the visibility at that corner. You're, in order to be able to see, you've got to go past the stop sign.
No, absolutely. I can show you the video again. You don't need to pass the stop sign.
Well, it seemed like the front of the car was beyond the stop sign. Because, you know, technically, we're supposed to stop behind the stop sign and then ease on up. So you really won't see, you know, you won't have real good visibility until you pull up. It seems to be. I also live in a neighborhood similar to this. Okay? I'll just be honest with you. I have cameras all around my house as well. Well, one side I need to put one. But I would love to have a privacy fence. But my choice would be that I want people to be able to see in. And I understand you don't want to see out. I do. It's not a great view. I understand that. But if someone does enter your gate, then you're not protected in terms of others being able to see what's going on. So just kind of think about that too. Because if you're blocking view, I know you're blocking view for yourself. So your child doesn't have to witness things. But on the safety side, it's best to be able, for the police and for even your concerned neighbors. I know maybe, might be few, but concerned neighbors wouldn't be able to see as well. I understand why. It's just.
My concern is if I lower the fences to that point, I don't mind to change the fences to something that you can see through. That's not a problem. My concern is people jumping into the property for real. And they keep playing outside and grabbing the kid.
They'll do, they'll, well, six feet.
We don't.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Did you have anything, Vice Mayor?
I do. To Ms. Coker's point, would that have to be for a brand-new fence? They'd have to take down the fence they have and put up a new fence. Correct?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Burton who's here. I think technically it is supposed to be, but I don't know if we couldn't work with them.
It's been installed.
Yeah, exactly. Well, I'm going to.
A non-permitted fence is installed. That would have to be taken down.
Have you been sworn, Mr. Burton?
Sworn at.
Please turn and face the court.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the factual statements and representations which you're about to give to this board will be truthful and accurate?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do I have to? Since there has been no permit issued, this fence is still new. And the work that needs to be done on it, you know, whatever you decide how it needs to be adjusted height-wise, I definitely would consult with your police department about SEPTED. Since no issue has been, no permit's been issued, even though one's been applied for, we can work with that to make it, that happen. We just don't like giving grants to folks that have already pulled permits because they're going to do the work anyway. So that was the question. And it was obviously stated numerous times, no permit has been pulled. So it's, to us, it's a new fence. All right?
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Burton?
Yep. No, he's not done yet.
No, okay. I know. I just.
Do you have a follow-up on that point or something else?
It, not totally so, please.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Based on what we're having, what we're able to see right now on the screen, there is no way that a fence will be able to put up that wouldn't basically hit the corner of their house, correct? Any fence. Like the diagram they showed was pretty much, or the earlier one with the thicker line showed it pretty much into their property, into the house. This one shows maybe what looks like a foot away from it. But that's the only way a fence goes up if it's permitted properly. Correct?
Yeah. If they want to have a four-foot fence in their front yard, it has to follow the line of the corner visibility.
That bluish triangle on the left, I think it's blue.
Yeah.
Okay. And likewise, at their driveway, that right now just has what looks, by all photos we've seen, just a wooden fence straight across. That would have to be modified to have the same type of look with whatever type of fence is put in as well.
Correct.
Okay. I agree with Ms. Coachman that in the video you showed, there's, when you pulled up to the stop sign and you were trying, you were trying to show that, hey, you can see down the road. When you did that, you could also tell that the front of your car was blocking, was where the crosswalk, if there was a crosswalk, would have been. So that means that anybody walked down the sidewalk there, which is, that area is only on that south side of the roadway, would have to then go out into the road or go behind you. And based on those, let's just call them decorative rocks that were there, that I don't know if you put those in or if they were already there.
They were already there.
That's weird, but.
Yeah. And they told me I cannot do anything outside the house without a permit, not even like make it nicer. They told me just to live it like that. That's not part of my property. That's part of the.
Easement?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah.
I did try.
It's, that's, and I will agree that the pedestrian activity in that area is at best shady and a lot of times. However, there are codes and there's community norms and the norm in that area is not to have that type of fence.
Ms. Moore?
The driveway not being permitted, this is probably more for Mr. DeLong and Ms. Singer. The driveway not permitting a fence, but a gate is permitted. Is that accurate?
It looks like to me, though, that they could have a four-foot-high fence following that line on the, inside the yellow, like four foot, four foot, four foot. But the blue, you know.
The blue, you can't have anything. Right. Correct. And right now, it looks like there's just a gate there. Yes.
Straight across.
Okay. I just said no fence allowed. So I thought maybe that meant that you were insinuating that it had to be open. But I wanted to clarify, they can close it off with some kind of a four-foot structure. And then for the, for the triangle of visibility, if there is an issue with its proximity to the house? So you're saying that we could stipulate to shrink the triangle but lower the fence?
Yeah, I think I mentioned it in the staff report that actually you could build the house eight feet from the front, either front property line. So if you were to follow that, it would be like a 16-foot visibility triangle at the corner. If that's the most they'd allow, if they'd built the house to the minimum setbacks from the front.
Okay. And then the final question was the one, the follow-up for Dr. Burton, which is, would you say that, I think it's an excellent point that there, there's assistance available. Would you say that they're potentially available to them both the new fence component of the grant program and SEPTED or just one or the other? And I guess maybe that's without the purview of this thing, but I'm just trying to think of, you know, solutions.
Yes, yes. Yeah. SEPTED is designed for commercial.
Okay.
Can I, because I think I understand your earlier question and it is, but we actually also do some residential. And what I would tell you is that the basic principles surrounding SEPTED is natural surveillance. And so we're never inclined to provide fencing that prohibits us looking inside. We like visibility, even commercial, residential. We would always petition for visibility-type structures and fencing. And seeing now specifically what we're looking at, we would say some sort of wrought iron or something that we can see into. That's always from a safety and security standpoint.
I'll reframe it. In the past, our grants haven't included residential in SEPTED. It's up to the board to decide if you decide to do that. Just be prepared that that'll open it up to all residences to come in and get a SEPTED grant. That would really keep the police department busy and this area also. So if you decide to do that, I would, I would defer whether you should do that to the chief because she'll know better than I that if, and you may want to consider letting the police department decide if one is necessary in residential before you would give one in, because there may be a residence out there that could use it.
Mr. Mayor, didn't.
But I would defer it to the police department.
Well, didn't we hear that Ms. Singer is SEPTED certified? And did you not say that? Okay. So we could possibly use several different points of attack with whether it's commercial or residential or.
I would defer, I would defer whether a partial needs, if the crime is such that they, she would know. And she would be the expert that could tell you whether, and we would defer to her all anyway.
I mean, it's a little bit of a slippery slope, as he said. And I would probably try to approach it more from just, if you're asking me my opinion based on my experience and my knowledge of SEPTED, basically what Councilwoman Coachman said and what I said. It's always best to have natural surveillance and visibility as opposed to hidden. And I don't need to have a SEPTED certificate to tell you that. So.
Well, and I mean, if, since we're talking about natural surveillance and all of that and the neighborhood at times, it's a double-edged sword because it's safety for you at the moment, but it's also safety for the bad person when they're inside. And if they're doing unsavory things inside, it's harder for the police to solve it too. So I know that there's a lot of questions, a lot of moving on. But I think that what I'm hearing is that, you know, if we were going straight out, that the council would probably vote to just uphold Ms. Singer's recommendation. But they're wanting to come up with some sort of alternatives to give an opportunity, maybe still to have the feel for you, but it's going to be in a different light of some height and some triangles and things of that nature. So, but it's going to, I mean, we could probably talk about this all day if we wanted to. But somebody's going to have to make a decision at some point and say, let's send it back to Ms. Singer with trying to come up with some security for them, as well as coming up with a plan that would still meet the SEPTED parts of it and working with the CRA. Does that sound like we can get to a, and then again, it may not meet the six-foot all the way around, but it's going to try to help to get to a point where the triangle could be moved out a little bit, but it's still only going to have to be four feet. So if I'm understanding and hearing, and Mr. Rudicell?
Yeah. Well, I was just going to ask, is this, is the intent that this would be continued while staff works with the applicant based on the comments and bring back some suggested resolution?
If they can come to a resolution amongst the staff and the resident, would it have to come back? Because they could issue a permit if they knew what, oh, it's because we still have to give the variance once they adjust.
Right.
Correct. Well, I can approve an adjustment. And then it wouldn't necessarily have to come back unless she didn't agree with the adjustment I'm willing to give. And then she could return back to.
I think you've heard everything that the council said and I think she's heard it.
And my inclination, my inclination is that there be provided at least a clear space, corner of visibility triangle, at least 16 feet along either side. Because then you're, you're meeting the same visibility you would have if you built the home to the minimum setbacks. I'm a little less, you know, I would encourage them to remove the fence gate from across the driveway because I think that inhibits them from being able to leave the driveway. But that would be my inclination based on what I've heard today. If you don't agree with that, please let me know now.
I think one of the things that we have to also be mindful of, and I know Mr. Perry brought it up at one point, but if something happens and we've approved it, we've approved something that caused cause and effect. And now we've approved it in a different way that could bring more back on this council because now an accident happened, you know, from that. So, Ms. Barnaby?
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Melton, point of order. Did we open the public hearing on this yet?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So we would, what, correct me because I'm not an attorney, but if we were to open the public hearing and then continue it.
Yeah. I thought we did and we closed it.
Not on this.
Not on this.
Well, let me, let me ask a different question. Is this an advertised public hearing? Did we?
Yes, according to this agenda.
Well, I know that the agenda says. Did we advertise this as a.
Did we advertise this as a, is this required to be a advertised public hearing? It's just an appeal from a, right.
Okay.
So I don't think it is, it's just a.
There's no notice requirement.
So, I mean, I guess there's a few ways this could go, but if it, if the council wants to send this back to the planning director with the comments that have been made, if they're able to work out an arrangement that Ms. Singer is comfortable approving within her authority, then the applicant can withdraw their appeal, it doesn't need to come back. But ultimately, if they are not able to, then it would need to come back to the board um, for a final decision on the appeal that's been submitted.
And Mayor, I, I think it puts Ms. Singer in a little bit of a switch to the extent that she wants direction. She doesn't want to administratively probably approve something and then have council or myself say to her, why'd you approve this, that this isn't what we talked about, that Wednesday at noon kind of situation. One thing you could do is you could basically deny it because it's certainly non-compliant. And that doesn't mean that they can't reapply with some of these comments that we talked about, going to Ms. Singer and asking for uh, an additional variance basically and coming back before the board for approval to deal with the issues regarding the corner sight visibility triangle, the fact that there's a six foot fence and a large portion of it where it's four foot restricted. Um, there's a gate there and other issues attendant to it. And, and I think these landowners quite frankly are gonna have to concede certain things because they built the fence without a permit uh, that has both issues regarding uh, traffic safety at that corner when it was told, oh, don't worry about the traffic from the right, no one looks that way. I'm looking at it going, seems to me people would look that way. And also there's a sidewalk there, so if a kid's racing down on a bike and you're backing out of that parking lot, guess what, who are you gonna hit, the kid on the bike, I actually hit kid that way in a, in a house. And so I kind of, I'm very sensitive to that. But I, I, I think that might be the best approach. And, and, and then take something back to council for an approved variance um, that would be acceptable within, within already pre-arranged conditions from the landowner, the uh, planning department, and ultimately concede a couple of these things, whether it's an adjustment on the corner sight visibility triangle of a few feet um, or, or the like. The SEPTED thing, I mean, you know what it sounds like as I sit back is that we want to put the stockade fence around to protect our property. And you can do that, but really where you see that is not very desirable neighborhoods. I, I don't even want to tell you some of the places I've seen, you know, that are boxed in like that. They're really usually industrial areas or pretty rough places. And I don't think that's what we want to do from an aesthetic land development perspective in addition to having the traffic safety issue and, and other issues.
Well, but, but one of the things that you just mentioned and it kind of made me think, what they're asking for today is to leave the six foot fence all the way around it.
Yeah.
And we've obviously heard that if that was voted on today, that that would be probably denied. So is that a better way to go, to deny what they asked for today with direction to send them back to work with Ms. Singer, to try to come up with what she's heard and what we've talked about? And then if it can't, then we would have to come back again and do it as quick as possible. I mean, we want to solve all that. So is that the best direction probably to go, Mr. Rudicell?
It's certainly a direction that the council could take because then they could ask for a modified adjustment that maybe they could get to a point that Ms. Singer would approve it, um, and then it wouldn't need to come back to the city council.
So I think everyone's heard that, is there, do we have to go to a public hearing now? Because there's no public in the room anyway.
Been advertised and I don't think there's anyone here for it.
Then why, then we need to stop putting it on the agenda that we mail out that there is a public hearing for this.
Well, it is, it is a public hearing in that it's quasi judicial. So we are having a hearing, it's just that there's no notice requirement. So if somebody happened to be in the audience that wanted to discuss it, they could.
Well, then let's open it and do that, so. All right, we've had quite a bit of discussion, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Is anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak?
Before you close.
Anyone wishing to speak, Ms. Barnaby?
I'm not sure which is the best way to go with this. But if, if there is no, no advertising requirement, but I still feel like just because we've done it this way in the past, we've continued public hearings to either get more information or to allow staff and the applicant to work together to try to come up with something that is amenable to all without having all of us up here feeling badly that we have to turn something down just to get something done.
But if we deny it now and they can work out an agreement, it won't have to come back to us. If we continue it, it's gonna have to still come back to us to be approved.
I thought you said they go withdraw.
I, I think we can commit to bringing something back in one month, March twenty-sixth. I think we can have those discussions, bring it back to you. Um, if they agree to it, um, fine, I still want to inform you of the decision because if it's an adjustment, it means it's still not gonna exactly meet code. So if I'm coming up with an alternative after we've had all this discussion, I think it's fair to bring it back to city council and inform you of what came out of it.
And so then the city council will totally understand, own it and have to accept if the people line up to come back in for the future.
I think it would be a highly abbreviated discussion at that point if there was an agreement between planning department and the applicant.
Well, I'm going to make a motion that we continue this until our final meeting in March with the hopes that we can come up with something. And we'll see whether I get a second and then we can have discussion.
I'll second it for discussion purposes.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Barnaby to continue, second by Ms. Moore, Ms. Moore?
Well, um, looking at, looking at this, this, these are the things that when I first started on the council that would make me, my hair turn gray. And luckily I have a very nice lady that makes it so that it doesn't look that way now. I understand where you're coming from, I truly, truly do. The women up here, we're moms. And it doesn't matter whether they're two or as mine just turned thirty-six on Monday. I'm hopeful that we can work together to try to get something that is palatable for the council and does not put us in the position of setting a major, major precedent when it comes to these things, but also leaves you with a level of comfort.
All right, we have a motion and a second to continue till our last meeting in March for Ms. Singer and the applicant to try to work to agreement to come back just to get, inform the council and then vote to probably at that point approve that plan. So we'll start.
Yes, sir. Just for the record, that meeting is on, do we know the date?
March twenty-sixth, I believe.
So it'd be March twenty-sixth at, at eight-thirty?
Yes. So March twenty-sixth at eight-thirty. All right, hearing no further discussion, we'll start the vote in Ward four.
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Carries five to zero, thank you very much. All right, Madam Clerk?
Item eight A is the proposal for city center garage retail space.
Mr. Perry?
Mayor, council, uh, we were informed that one of our tenants uh, will be non-renewing his lease. Um, I believe it's July first is the, the tenancy period.
Excuse me, Mr. Perry, would you use your microphone, thank you.
Thank you, I apologize. We've been informed that one of our tenants in the city, city center retail space will not be renewing his lease beginning at July first. And so, um, we did have a tenant express an interest in, in expanding their facility, their, their, their program, their retail program. Uh, what I did was Ms. Fort, Ms. Forten actually sent out a letter to all the other tenants asking them if they had any interest in that particular space and if they did to please provide a description of what they were proposing for use of that space. The terms of, of, of the lease would be basically the same as it relates to specific terms, conditions and rental provisions. And so Ms. Fleece, that is the owner of Pink and Navy's, come up with a proposal for city center retail space next to her shop, Pink and Navy. It, there was a copy of the description that's included in the package and that's here before you for approval. She was here at the council meeting earlier, I believe she had to leave, she was hoping to address the council, but um, did, did, did have to leave. So that's what we're asking for approval for, is to go ahead and, and finalize um, a lease with Pink and Navy for this proposed use. The proposed use itself basically is fairly well described in a program. Um, I don't have too much experience with apparel, apparel marketing or other retail things and so I'll leave it up to council to figure that one out.
So Mr. Perry, I have a few questions and then we'll go to the council. What is our plan for renewal on all of these with lease opportunities with increases in leases? Or, or has that been discussed or talked about with the market we're in now?
Yes, sir. So I believe that there is a escalator and, and Corey Forten can probably come up and be the best person with familiarity regarding the terms of lease. But I believe there's an escalator um, annually that is based on a CPI adjustment. But I'll, no, let Corey take it, just have it that.
Um, there is an annual increase of three percent under the current lease. And the current lease, they had the first three years, which is expiring for everybody this year, but they have two additional one-year extensions, but it does go up three percent every year.
Okay, and the reason I ask that is because we know that with other discussions we've had with things being built around the city, what the responsibility of um, government is to put retail or force retail, not force retail in different shops like this and at what cost and who picks the winners and losers? And I know that would, would our cost in these retail units be equivalent with market rate or higher or lower?
I, I think, you know, in speaking with some of the folks that do have experience in it, uh, you know, obviously Ms. Tabaka, um, who's now with NDC and does a lot of leasing of commercial space, I, I think that they're, they're reduced below the market rate. However, there's a fairly good size of, of vacancy in, in the retail market space in Bradenton and the downtown sector as well. And um, I, you know, when we did put in the, when we did the solicitation and, and Mr. Tabaka did that for us, I think it was with a former comp, uh, uh, real estate agency at the time, a brokerage. And uh, we did get, we did get a number of, of proposals and a potential interest from folks. And we vetted them carefully, trying to look at those businesses that would probably be most suitable for the downtown corridor. And uh, we, we took out some of them, they were interesting businesses, but that's what we took to you, as you may remember. And I think we actually had presented you with all of them, but we explained to you why we selected, recommended those that we did. Um, we continue to keep that theme that a mix of uses being food service limited, obviously. Um, you know, it's a place to get ice cream, place to get some pastries, um, coffee in the morning, that type of thing. Might be the best uh, uh, ki- kind of use um, for the surrounding area and retail purpose. And then we have some obviously apparel retailers. And one of them is the, the, the individual that is not using one of the extensions and renewing his lease um, on an annual basis. But this does fill um, that particular gap and, and it expands it into kind of a more novel approach to retail that looks at, in this case, I, I guess it's a, I, I guess I'll call it a phenomena instead of a fad, which is, is making your own clothes, customizing your own clothes. And again, you know, I shop at Walmart most of the time, so I don't do much of that, yeah.
The reason I'm asking these questions is being the only one that was sitting up here when we did the garage and being very supportive of putting retail and even opportunity for future retail along Third um, when it was the right time. And we talk about heads and beds, well, this is feet in stores because we want, we want retail and different opportunity down there that is going to be bringing people down here, so then maybe they'll go somewhere else, maybe they'll walk around. Maybe when they stay at the hotel, they'll go visit it. And we had some restrictions on timing that we, because we want them to be in and that was kind of for the discounted rate that we were giving, that, that that's there. And I, I think by nature, opening up, you know, right after COVID, there's still a lot to grow and see and, and do. But you know, when does it come that we are being good stewards of the taxpayer dollars? We know that garage is gonna start costing us money now that it's not as new as it once was. And you know, other options are gonna come to this board for the total building of the garage and the retail. But we're also gonna have deferred maintenance that we're gonna have to start thinking about in this building. So I just want to be cognizant of what we're doing and again, these are one-year renewals. So we have a one-year renewal and then we have another one year. So we'll see where we are downtown at that point with heads and beds that will bring feet into the stores. And I'm gonna say it just because it's me, I'm disappointed they're not open later, but I'm not disappointed in them because we want them to be sustainable. So just for us to say, you have to stay open until seven, but they're losing money, they're not gonna be there. So like I said, I'm not disappointed in the people we have there. And the one that's leaving, I believe is leaving after talking with him because he just can't make a living there. You know, it's not enough. So um, we've got to go through that and, and really try to make sure that we're making things happen of what our vision was, but till our vision is more heads and beds downtown, it might still take a few more cycles to get it. So I saw Ms. Coker, Ms. Barnaby, and then Ms. Moore.
Um, I saw in here no financial impact, I'm, I'm assuming are, are they just going to take over that other lease? And so they'll be paying an addition, they'll be paying more. I mean, that's a great store, I think it'll be great to have them there and expand it. But I just want to make sure that they're paying, they're covering that, the additional space with more rent.
Oh yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll be paying the, the replacement rent for that, that space and there aren't any TIs, tenant improvements to do. If they are, they have to be done by the tenant. And usually they're not permanent FF and E furniture fixtures, I mean, and, and equipment kind of stuff, it's not permanent fixtures.
Well, I would say that's a great quality uh, store that'll be, you know, more activity and activity brings more activity and I think it, I think it's a great, um, it'll be a great addition.
I'd also just point out, and you've probably all have seen it, that the Pink and Navy actually does currently do a lot of like special um, events out there where they'll bring someone in that is a jeweler, a specialty jeweler type of thing. And they do a nice job, I think, in doing the social media advertising and getting people out and, and getting feet into the stores, as Mayor pointed out. So this is gonna be kind of that on a higher level is, is what I'm assuming.
Ms. Barnaby?
Yeah, I, I think that this is gonna be a wonderful addition to our downtown, I'm, I'm definitely in favor of it. But I am curious, who contacts the stores or is anybody contacting the stores when we have events that are scheduled? Because I've been down at numerous events and the stores are closed. And I don't know if it's a communication issue, I don't know if it's a, a staffing issue?
Um, what I can tell you is that we don't and we probably should at some level. Because I, I agree with you, some of the events, um, and, and it's interesting to hear some of the vendors down there, the merchants, because they'll usually say, you know, I can do really well for my month by having a couple of good days, public market or a special event and the like. But sometimes I'll walk by there and they haven't been open. And, but, but I, I will say that most of them I think know when they're special events, we advertise them on the boards up there.
I, I don't.
And maybe I shouldn't be assuming that and maybe we should do something to let them know. I don't know if it'll change the behavior.
I, I, well, as far as changing the behavior, I believe that when we put contracts out to them, we to, we told them specifically that we selected them because they had the understanding that they were to stay open in the evenings when we have events in such downtown or on the weekends.
I think one of the things that's hard with that, Ms. Barnaby, and it's really, you know, again, we spend a lot of time down there, all of us do, is when you see the market on Saturdays, obviously it's during the day, so it's a little different. Third Avenue is closed, you know, with Main Street. The night events, it's only closed to the edge of Main Street and Third Avenue is open. So a lot of the traffic doesn't want to walk across a road that's still open. So you know, I don't know that, I'm not saying that we should close. So, you know, I don't know that, I'm not saying that we should close Third Avenue. But, and I think if you ask them, because I have asked them, that the events we're having, people aren't really shopping for that type of thing. Now, maybe some other things, you know, Winter Wonderland might be a little bit different because you could sell Christmas stuff at the time.
They, most of them were not open that night.
Right, no, and that, and I agree with you, but I do know that they all know when our activities are.
I, I think we, I mean, if we put it in the contract that they were to be open, we wanted to see the businesses open when we were having events down here. And with just a little bit of, of planning and advance notice, even, even if it's like they're not necessarily shopping for clothing or a tchotchke or whatever, having the store open gives people the opportunity to walk in there, see what it is and go, oh, next time I want to get something that has Bradenton on it, you know, to send to somebody, I know where to come. It's, it's in their best interest to be open when we're bringing down thousands of people.
But that's the main reason why we have discounted the rent.
But they.
That's one of the reasons. But.
They, they agree to it.
Nobody's walking in and buying anything. So from a business standpoint, why am I paying a person to sit there for three or four hours? And it's no, there's no return on that. But we also maybe have to remind them that the return is the lower value of what you're paying for that. And, and that was, you know, just like how do we dictate to somebody what they can build on this property? Well, we own it right now. Until it's over with, we can dictate. That's just thoughts because again, believe me, I'm with you and I'm sure everybody else is the same. We want that vibrant and we want it to be, and I walked on Bradenton Beach and the stores were open until nine o'clock, you know, on, on the main drag there and trying to support. And I didn't want to buy what I bought, but I bought it because I was trying to support that store. You know, I didn't need it. I wanted to buy it, but I didn't need it. But again, I felt like walking in and such a nice lady that owned it is like support them, especially with what we've been through during the storm. So, Ms. Moore?
I was, so general comments along the lines of what Mr. Perry just said. We know this tenant, so in my mind, they're, they're vetted. We kind of know what they're about. And I think that they've proven, at least to me personally, a dedication to making the space work. I think that the, their, their proposal for having events, to some extent, are going to be helpful in the same way that the public market is helpful. I've had a lot of conversations with all the tenants and they do really rely on the market, is my understanding. And I would just, I, I just want to qualify. I like them to be open during the events too, but especially now with having done some research on retail analysis and how they come to decide what they're going to spend money on and where they're going to open their businesses and whatnot. I would just say that not every event is the same. And so I think while the public market is encouraging an element of shopping and, you know, that sort of exposure, some of our evening things, you know, New Year's Eve comes to mind, St. Patrick's Day. I don't think that those events are necessarily going to give them that retail bang for their buck. And I would just, I would just caution us to have like, you know, very, you know, maybe uniform, you have to be open for every single event because I do think that the type of event, Winter Wonderland is a very good example of an evening one that I think would make sense because of the element of holiday shopping and, and that being a little bit more of a family-yeared event. So that's just my only, that's my thought on that. And I support the proposal because I, I do think that in the very least, I think I can count on this tenant to do their best to make it work.
No, that's, basically, we're all saying the same thing, just in trying to get to it because we, we want this to succeed and that's very important. So, Mr. Perry, do you need a motion to approve?
Yeah, I think I prefer a motion basically to approve a.
Mr. Kramer?
But motion to approve the proposal by Amy Fleese for rental of an additional city center garage retail space.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Kramer, second by Ms. Barnaby. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Carrie's five to zero. Thank you. Mr. Perry, anything else?
Just one other matter, and I think it's going to be characterized as new business. As it relates to a letter that I think was sent to council regarding the sidewalk across from City Hall at the Harley Bald, it's in front of the Harley Bald Law Office. And I believe it was sent to the council.
Yeah, it was copied to my office, yours, Mr. Rudesell and the council people.
Yeah, okay. I, I, I've spoken with Mr. Rudesell on this and have asked him to put together.
He's already put together a letter and sent it back out.
Yeah.
And it's gone to all the councils.
Yeah, I just want the council to know that.
Yeah. Response of the history and logistics of what we've done.
Right.
We've been working with them over the two years now.
Probably three and a half. I think it was about.
A little longer.
Yeah, yeah. About as long as I've been here.
Trying to come to a resolution of a building that we used to own. And it was purchased by not this previous or this current owner. But just so everybody knows and how much you want to know and what we should say or not shouldn't say. But when the sidewalk was put back in for the new streetscape, it was put in the exact same place as the old. So there was a little bit of, well, we understood mischaracterization in that letter. And so it's been there for 70-plus years in that same area. It hasn't been moved farther onto their properties, what they say at that. But we looked at a lot of different options. Mr. McQuellen was still here at that time, I believe.
Yes, sir.
And it was, it was going to be a cost. And I wasn't willing to take that on in the mayor's office and say that, yes, spend the cost, take out three oak trees and move the sidewalk because it would actually take out three oak trees there. And so then we thought it went away. Didn't you think it went away, Mr. Rudesell, per se? And it's been gone for a long time. And then all of a sudden, last week, we got that letter. So we were not trying to hide anything. We thought we had resolved it with several different options for them. But I do think that this may come back. But, you know, once Mr. Rudesell gets his response, then we'll.
We, just to add to that, Mayor, if I could. Mr. Rudesell actually has taken this on as, as he can, you know, he's, he's kind of humorously indicating for, for, for several years. And the, in addition to the sidewalk proposal that we did drawings on and costed out and then approached Ms. Petroff and arguably her client, she said, what else are some options? And so we looked at the option basically of providing insurance to the Harley Bald of that particular property because the concern was, and it's mentioned in the letter about the liability issue. And we were able to get certain, certain coverages, but, but not the amount that was, I think, sought as it relates to the full coverage by Ms. Petroff and her, and her client. And then we looked at the possibility of saying, well, what we could do basically is we, we'd do an indemnification agreement and say that we will assume all liability for the public sidewalk because we do believe it's a public sidewalk. And if you get to a point where you're going to sell your airspace, the sidewalk is a four and a half foot encroachment, basically, that, that's what it is. If, if it's an encroachment at all, let me just preface it there. The boundary line that's being asserted is four and a half feet. It, the, 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 the concept of, we also tried to buy that. Let me start the whole conversation was we did an appraisal, I think, and got a value and made an offer on that property originally that came back that, no, that's not sufficient because now that you've changed the code and we can build up to here, there's airspace. And so that four and a half feet is multiplied by, you know, 20 times up. And it's several, and I think that was highlighted in the letter, the recent letter as well. We never quite saw it like that. But we did look at the possibility of saying, here's the deal, you know, if there's a situation where in the future you decide that you're going to sell it, we would, you'd convey it to us so that we could, we could basically be under our insurance rules. And under the law, there's caps on that, those insurance rules, particularly as it relates to punitive damages and, and there's caps on general liability. And then if necessary, we could convey it back to you with a quitclaim deed or the like. I mean, we have gotten as creative as we possibly could from looking at an insurance perspective, a purchase perspective, a use perspective.
Please?
Asking please?
No, no, no. I said a lease, remember that?
Oh, a lease, a lease. Yeah, a lease. And asking please. Yeah, very politely, I, I think. And so, you know, we're a little bit frustrated as much as Ms. Petroff is, as far as not being able to reach out, reach out some sort of amicable resolution of this. But you did point out that the sidewalk has been there for, I think, how many years, 50 or?
At least.
Yeah, at least 50 years. And when this, when the downtown was redone, it was replaced, but it was the same boundary, basically, was there. And the firm itself, I believe, only obtained property, I think that was purchased after the sidewalk was there.
Correct.
Yeah, as well. So, so we think we have some claims and I won't get into.
And the city at one point owned that property.
The city, the city owned it.
That's where the teen center was.
Right, yeah, yeah. And, and I think the players when.
No, where they are, it's, it was the teen center and it was also, wasn't it, not AGM? Coke Carter had his, his stock and.
But we think we have fairly good legal claims, you know, i- if it was, if it was pushed to the, to the legal limit. And we, we'll continue to amicably try to resolve it. And I think that Mr. Rudesell's letter goes in that direction of kind of highlighting our position. We'll just have to take it one step at a time, I guess.
All right, thank you for that update. Any questions for Mr. Perry? Hearing none, now let's go.
That was the last item on the agenda.
All right, so no unfinished business. Council reports will start in Ward two.
I knew you were going to say that. Have been having neighborhood meetings and meeting with individuals. I will admit some degree of frustration for us not being able to finish certain projects timely. I will admit to being frustrated at how long it's taking us to do some of the repairs to our city after the storm. And a word to the wise is sufficient. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer?
Wow, I was still trying to get my stuff together. Normally you take a little bit longer, ma'am.
Do you, what, you want?
I'm good.
A little song, a little dance? I mean, which one?
I'm good. Obviously, we're all, also, all the rest of us are probably going to mention the Regatta this weekend. Great weather helps for a great turnout. It was a lot of fun, the drone show, the fireworks on Friday night, everything going. And I'm sure the chief and other public safety staff can attest, the chiefs, I'm sorry, other public safety staff can attest that it went pretty much seamlessly, which is a testament to the staff that is working basically all year to make sure it works right. One thing I want to mention is a thank you to Pat Haggerty from the Pirates Marauders. He's a longtime employee out there, is clubhouse manager out of Pirate City and is responsible for all the nice pirate-themed nameplates that you see in front of us with the proper spelling of Gonzalez Moore. But that also prompted us to be able to get them for Mr. Rudesell, Mr. Williams and the chiefs. It was a very nice ribbon cutting at a facility that I worked at quite a bit in my tenure with the police department, doing off-duty security. I remember when it was nothing more than what looked like a portable at a, at a school to, with nothing but a hot plate to make basically a pot of soup for guys, which apparently was pretty good soup, to now a modern, major league level facility. And that's really what is LECOM's, the academy, LECOM's been made into. It's really something I'm quite proud to be, have my name on signs that are posted there, so. Other than that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Moore?
I, I was really disappointed, as everyone knows, to miss the county workshop last Friday because I was not well. But I have begun watching it and so just a couple of notes on that. I noted, I haven't finished it yet, so just introductory, preliminary notes. I noticed that Chairman Cruz expressed an interest in our visioning. And I also note that he was here for our workshop originally scheduled to discuss the visioning. And so, of course, I want to encourage us to come back to that, loop back to that and, and pick up that conversation again. And in the spirit of collaboration with the county, I think that, I think it's great that they're interested in, in us coming together and honing kind of a more of a definitive plan for what we want to see here and how to get there, how to accomplish it. I also had gotten some emails regarding the skate park. And Mr. Driscoll is on top of that as well as Attorney Rudesell. But I only raised that because in my conversation with some of the officers when I did my ride along, they expressed, you know, a little bit of their hands being tied because we don't have those facilities yet for the camping law to really be enforceable or have any teeth to it. And so that's another thing, I think, that just brings to mind our ongoing working with the county. I think that's something that we have to kind of maybe continually bring to the forefront of their minds because I know that they're actively and aggressively pursuing those type of facilities, but we're not there yet. And I feel like our, potentially the police are a little hamstrung on, on being able to be effective with some of those issues. And similar to Councilwoman Barnaby's notes, I was meant to mention this to, sorry, excuse me, Colonel Lee and Mr. Williams, that the drains after those rains in the older part of Ward four are, have debris in them again. It's just a very treat area. So anytime you have one of those, you know, continually rainy times, the leaves and the, and the debris gets clogged up in the rain, in the, in the drains. I noticed that the manhole that's sinking on Brown Street no longer has the four posts and the caution tape. I don't know if that means it has been fixed or if it is just maybe rain and they got, you know, who knows what happened there. But I want to thank whoever undertook after a citizen wrote in to tidy up Lift Station 13 a little bit. It has to be said, because I have to say it, that we still have some kind of equipment, bungee cord to a tree and the, you know, the generator and the sandbags. So just again, can't wait to talk more about Lift Station 13 and 3 because while I appreciate the cleanup, it still is, you know, not where it totally needs to be. And I think that that is it for me for Ward four.
Thank you, Ms. Kujman.
Thank you. I just want to piggyback on something that you said. And I'm glad, I'm glad that it was live streamed, that you were able to kind of be there with us with the collaborative meeting with the county. It, it's a good feeling when two governments work together. And from what I understand, that wasn't always the case between the city and the county. So that is, it, it, it's encouraging. But you did make a comment about people camping or, you know, causing some people to be uncomfortable. I'm hoping that we really do get something set up so that we have a place to take, you know, people who need another location. Because if we're planning to do what we want to do for City Park, if that part of our city, my neighborhood, if, if we can't get that under some control and have, have people where they, they can be or need to be, it's, it's, we'll, we'll still have that problem of no one wanting to come to LECOM or in the area in the evening. You know, fine and well, 1:00 PM to 4:00 or 5:00, but, so anyway. So I hope we continue working on that. There are a lot of good things going on in Ward five, even in my immediate area. I think I mentioned it briefly our last meeting. We were trying to get out of here, so I didn't belabor it. But the newly paved streets, it's really looking good. The speeders are now able to speed smoothly. And I, but I did notice this morning though, I guess our rain did cause a little depression on, in that, on Third Street. And I think I'll take a little ride around and see if, you know, I guess new material, you know, just couldn't withstand that, whatever rain we got. Everything's good. I hear a lot of people still complaining about permits. And I'm not sure if this individual contacted everyone, but I will. contacted everyone, but I will bring it up with permitting after the meeting. I don't know, Ward Five is alive. Thank you, chiefs and all those folks that keep me feeling safe at night in my neighborhood.
All right, thank you, Ms. Cochrane.
Yeah, not to be redundant, but I do want to really extend my sincere thanks to all BPD, Fire, Public Works. I know it was a huge undertaking for the regatta and I've heard a lot of really great positive comments out in the community. It was a family-oriented and they just... It's been all nothing but positive that I've heard. And so, I thank you for all your efforts because I know that was quite an undertaking and hopefully they'll be back for the 11th one. I also would like to just encourage everybody to take an opportunity to go and experience one of the spring training games and cheer our Pirates on. Our relationship with them is such... I think we're very lucky. They're very supportive of us and we're supportive of them. And so, I just want to tell everybody to go and enjoy it. It's short but sweet. And I also wanted to, again, thank for the opportunity to meet with the county. I think it's something that... And I liked it better than when we had the county of governments, council of governments. I feel like we were able to really hone in more on specific things that applied to us and so, I would like to encourage that we keep doing that.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Coachman.
I also forgot to say, because I missed a lot of the grand openings and ribbon cuttings, I just want to say congrats to the dedication that was done at LECOM and the opening of the high-tech hall, all that and a bag of chips with our new PD range and academy.
Thank you. All right, so I'll start with regatta. We figured 15,000-plus on Friday night, which was almost like a normal July 4th or even maybe, you know, very close to it. And that event just started a couple of years ago on Friday night, so that was a great event. And I thought that with, working with Colonel Lee and his group, obviously our police and fire, the way things are done, but, you know, it looked like it should have looked when it was... Two minutes after it was over, you couldn't even tell that anybody had been there. So, that was a good thing and that's what we want our city to show with the professionals we have all the way through, Public Works, Police, Fire, County, EMS, you know, we can just name them all, Coast Guard, whoever else, Sheriff's Office. And then, 85,000-plus is what they got the numbers for Saturday. So, you know, it truly seemed like it was back totally from the first one all the way through. One year we had rain, very tough, then COVID and now... So, February 21st, 2026 is already on the calendar with the ISM and all the racing. So, that's, you know, we'll bring all that back because they're already starting planning now because they've got to get the dates in advance. Obviously, the Pirates and the grand opening, the ribbon cutting we did was fun to see that next step because it not only brings us up with Major League Baseball standards, it also brings us up where if the other 10 and a half months a year when we want to have tournament baseball there, it gives us an opportunity to be able to use a facility for those tournament baseballs that will be not just for the Pirates only. You know, the agreements are being drawn out and worked through. So, that's going to be exciting to see once City Park is finally built and done as we go through and as Ms. Coachman said, make it a City Park. Just want to kind of put out there in the public that, you know, people say a lot of things about things on Facebook and neighbors and all of that. City Park will be a baseball facility, but there will be other City Park amenities that will be open for the public. I don't want to say 24/7, Mr. Perry, but will be open. So, even when the park's not in use, there will be playground areas. We're working with the school district, working with POW, working with all of that. So, there will be amenities there other than just for baseball when that park is being used for tournament baseball, things like that. So, you know, our plans are in the process and we'll just keep going. Obviously, the county and city meeting is always important. We've said that from day one and under my administration that we were going to. We had the first one and then, you know, things kind of got where they were. Now, we're planning on it and I know they're meeting with Palmetto next. But, each one of the items we discussed could have taken all three hours, but we had only three hours and I think it's the right thing to do. You're going to see a lot come out of that with traffic studies. You're going to see a lot going on with DOT and the process going through. And as I said in that meeting, we have to be a little patient and you have to go through the process. The patience is not from 1995 when, for whatever reason, we didn't get a third bridge. The patience is weeks and months now. So, let's not try to jump ahead of the process and ruin the process where we then will have to start over again. And I do think there's some people out there that would like that, but in all the years that I've been a councilman and now mayor, we're close. Let's get to that point of having that alternate traffic that will alleviate some of the blockage. As long as we're growing, we're never going to stop at all. And that's what we heard this morning at the chamber with pancakes and politics with our state reps and senators, you know. But, if we're moving towards it, it's going to help. And what we know that we didn't do 30 years ago, let's not be those people that didn't do it now, so they're talking about us 30 years later. So, that's just some things I think we can really keep building on. I think we have a great relationship with the county administratively, electeds and our administration and our electeds to work, continue. And one of the things that I was very happy in that meeting was they see the importance of, obviously, of us facing and fixing it that we've been doing for years, but I think there's opportunity. As Mrs. Moore alluded to, how do you face and fix some things? It costs money. There's monies out there that we're going to be able to, that the county got as a whole, not just for county unincorporated, that we're going to be able to hopefully utilize some of that to help continue the process forward. Mr. Perry or Mr. Colonel Lee, can you give us an update on the lift station on 27th Street East with the new bypass pump and generator and all that that was, I saw yesterday? Maybe Mr. Perry could give us on that? That's right off. We stopped because we thought it was a rain issue and it wasn't. It was a very positive issue and that's what we're looking for to do in all of our lift stations and make them better.
Well, you know, we did have the opportunity to stop there. It was kind of just by happenstance. We were going out to the Law Enforcement Training Center dedication and our crews were out there and so, we're taking a full rehab of that lift station. It's a major lift station. It's not a master lift station, but it is a major lift station that handles a great deal of flow that's kind of on the Braden River there nearby as well as frankly, the Manatee River because it is... Its location is pretty close to that. And it had been in need of upgrades to deep well improvements, the pumps themselves and I think the backside of it for bypass. There had been a bypass, actually, one of the bypass pumps that we use with the generator for, I don't know, a year and a half. It's been a while that it was out there. So, it was nice to see basically that we're rehabbing the totality of that particular lift station. The electronics was there and our folks across the spectrum of Public Works through electrical engineering and mechanical and some of our other folks from even list... From the water treatment side were there. So, it was really good and we're really excited about continuing to do those kind of projects.
Well, what I was impressed with, obviously, for a year and a half, there's been a bypass pump out there. You don't even see the bypass now. It's behind the building and it's the goal. Some of them are going to be harder because they're right on areas. But, you know, it was something that will sustain, especially in a crucial area closer to the Braden River in a neighborhood that we have to have six feet plus of water now covering our whole land before that would ever fail. And one of the things we, you know, will be bringing back to the council probably pretty soon is some opportunity, how those maintenance projects on those products will be going forward with the rest of our maintenance that may have been deferred, that may have put us in the situation we're in now. Face it and fix it. What's taken 40 years to get to isn't going to take us 40 days to fix. So, and I'm saying that for the public too. We are doing that. We are working with the county. We are working with our state legislators. We are working with grants to make things better. I know this prolonged the meeting, but I really think it's important for people to hear. You can have somebody come up and throw out, "Hop in" at the beginning of a meeting. It's just not true. And personal attacks, which we will not have that again. I won't allow that to happen again, but I allowed it to happen now because you look at the character of the person that's spewing the crap. And we're going to fix the crap. And maybe it's, you know, apropos, but we're not going to keep going that way. Chief, why don't you, I know you might have done it anyway, but give us an update on the Law Enforcement Academy building.
Just real quick, thanks for several of you who had the opportunity to come out. I know it's a long ways, but I think it's going to be a well worth it facility. We'll come up with a couple of dates to invite you all to come back and shoot guns and drive cars fast and there'll be no pitting because we don't allow that here at the police department. But, everybody's real excited about it and I've gotten some phone calls already, FHP, some of the other area agencies that want to know when it's open for business. So, I really think when you come out there, you're going to see an incredible opportunity of law enforcement training. But, beyond that, my vision, although I'm going to be kind of trying to push it really quick and somebody hopefully will carry that torch beyond my time, is to extend it to our professional partners, our business partners. We want to create a team-building type obstacle course that allows them to come out and do all kinds of stuff. I mean, it's 70 acres out there. We just have so much opportunity to really merge with our community business leaders to turn it into something that is going to be much greater, I think, than we ever imagined. So, and thanks for the comments. I feel like my planning crew, I know Captain Thiers did a great job with some of the lieutenants and sergeants and putting together a very fortified regatta, maybe more than you've seen in past years. But, I think given the state of our nation right now with some of the terrible incidents we've seen, it was appropriate. And I heard nothing but reviews and people just felt good and safe. I'm getting a lot of good reviews for downtown right now and so, keep that in mind when you all see my overtime budget. But, beyond that, I... And you didn't mention it, Mayor, but you know, traffic seemed to do pretty well yesterday. I'm going to do that. We'll see how it does today, but getting folks in and out of the game. We have a few more day games in front of us, but so far, so good. Seemed to flow a little bit better, but thank you.
Well, and again, people don't think we think about traffic. We have an officer almost several times a day that drives the lights and makes sure that they're synced. We're looking at it. Some of the other opportunities that we have to look at lights, keeping it going is very important. So, and also, you know, has anybody ever gone to a large sporting event and when you get out of your car, you don't normally get to tell the police where you're going to go. They tell you which direction to go because they are the professionals that know the traffic flow at the moment. And it, so far, it's been lighter games. We'll see today and then Friday. But, with traffic, traffic is being directed south to go north, so we don't bottleneck our downtown at that time, 4 o'clock. Again, it's an evolving plan. Captain Thiers, again, with his whole crew, is doing a great job at seeing that and how we do it. So, you know, I'm just impressed with the opportunity that people think sometimes we're not listening or looking. We are listening and looking. We talked about traffic downtown. And I just think that we have opportunities to continue to positively fix some of that infrastructure that patience is important. And I think, Chief, the other thing that I want to say on that, the law enforcement building out there with the school district, you know, it's really a school district, Manti Technical College and the city of Bradenton, is that's another collaboration that would have probably never happened in the past. And the school district had the money, didn't know they were going to spend as much as they did, but it had to be done. We had the land and this council, I think with three renditions of the land, finally gave what we needed and it's only going to be something that's positive. I heard that small fire trucks might be able to drive out there.
No.
But, not big fire trucks. But, well, our little, our little pumppers for moving that. They weigh less than our swap trucks. So, anything weighs less than a swap truck, maybe. But, that'll be...
Depends who's driving it.
Yeah. But, no, it's something that definitely is a positive, working with our school district right now with City Park and the, obviously, the county, the TDC, the federal, the state and the school district because some of the things in the school district, and we did like to hear that this morning, that any infrastructure money that comes in should stay in the neighborhood it's in. When you think about the urban core, what that will bring, school district money with some of these developments over the next three to five years will bring into the school district, we're going to try to keep them in the urban core for our Title I schools and our... So, and I think the school district right now is very applicable to listening and seeing what we can put out there to help the children of the urban core in a better way. So, that's all I've got. Is there any other department heads that have anything? I would just ask Colonel Lee again if we can get a paving plan sometime in the near future because there's been a lot of paving that's been done, which has been great in all the wards, but we'll at least have a plan going forward for the rest of this year as well as looking at and having council members maybe bring up a road or two. They might see that could be something on next year's budget ideas. But, Mr. Perry, anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Here tonight, we'll be adjourned.